Roll call. Kristofer.
Here.
Lynn Jones. Lucino and Gilbert.
Here.
Rob Canow.
Present.
Delvee Radsick.
Here.
Craig Sivers.
Here.
Okay, public hearings we have done, a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve is presented. Oh, wait, didn't it change? Tell town. I was talking to Dave though, because it says temporary batch plant. You said we got to do two things, right? We got to do special land use and site plan or two different?
There's two different motions, one for special land use and then about that, the other for site plan. Sometimes you have the same night, sometimes they have a different.
Almost that's a change, but almost that's a change we make immediately.
You can just put the vote. Do like an A and B.
It's not very well disclosed to the other.
Um, do you want to add that to the event?
Uh, no, both ways. Since we can't, I'm going to change it.
And is there a second on the agenda?
Support.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion three. Any public comments on the agenda? Uh, approval of the minutes dated June 3rd, 2025. Is there a motion for that?
Motion approved, presented.
The second? Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion three. Uh, communications, correspondence workshop, so we're known. So old business, temporary batch plant. Um, so we have before us the tabled item of the temporary batch plant seeking a special land use and site plan. Approval as stated. Um, the applicant would like to, well, I'll let the applicant go first.
So, so I've spoken to Sir Met a couple of times about this. We did not find the plans that would be in a known section to clarify a little bit as far as what we're looking for with waivers. It's what we're asking for in the unique situation. We're not building a structure. We're not going to have customers. It's a, it's a temporary site is what it is. So some of the requirements, engineering requirements, they don't apply. So and like I said, Sir Met's here, he can, you know, speak to this too. But the only way to get engineer, engineering approval is to waive some of the requirements just because they're simply not needed or required with the operation that we're proposing. So it's my understanding that, um, Tri County cannot waive any of these requirements and the planning commission cannot waive these requirements. City Council must wait these requirements. So what we're asking for is just an approval contingent on time. And then let City Council make, make their decision overall, if that makes sense. I'm, I'm good with this. I only have to eat through this stuff very often, so that's just my perspective. As long as I'm prepared.
Okay. Um, so I had communication with Sir Met. Um, we'll probably have Sir Met speak as well. Um, the one thing as far as feedback that I'm, the commission is not privy to the conversations that took place today is that, um, an itemized list of what you would like waived specifically. Um, and that would be needed for council. And then Sir Met would need time to provide his feedback for that. So like A and B tomorrow, because meeting is next week, Tuesday. So Sir Met, I will have you, um, speak to the commission based on the site plan revision first. If you want to give any feedback on that change.
So, um, because this falls under a special land use, that triggers site plans middle and all the engineering requirements. And that's what we stated in our letter back in March. Um, so what the applicant did, they responded to the letter with some comments. And we said, okay, that's fine. Um, but we don't have the authority to waive any of these requirements just because they still fall under the general law of the village. Um, it's not under zoning, so it's, it's not going to be granted waivers here with the planning commission or ZBDA. It needs to go to council. So what happened is that, that was not communicated back or was not clear. It was back and forth, a couple of letters. And so here we are today. Um, they still require to provide parking, pavement, detention, storm soars, all the engineering standards as part of our commercial operation or industrial operation. What, what I suggested to the applicant is just, since we don't have the authority to waive them, go to council and request those specific items to be waived because of the nature of the business being proposed here. Now, we don't have necessarily, uh, a problem with that, but again, that's, that's council's decision. They may see it still necessary or not necessary based, based on the, based on the request. Also, the applicant, what they did is there's another part to it. A letter is not an official submittal. What I told, um, the applicant is they need to, they need to revise the site plan to include that. And they did. Uh, so in, in the revised site plan, page four, sheet four, they list all these requirements and they do state waiver is needed. Not granted yet, but they're asking for, for that to be on the record. It's just unfortunately, there is no special procedure for a temporary batch plant. As part of the ordinance, it just falls under special land use. And special land use triggers a site plan, so a site plan triggers all the engineering. So that's, that's the loop we're in.
So you're aware, um, the information that came in on the waiver was just, um, provided to the commission today. So they were not aware of the request as a council, like as a whole for the waiver. And then also they do not, and did not have a particulars of what waiver requests you were asking for. So I will leave it up to the commission to discuss and decide how they would like to proceed with this. Is there anything else you would like to add or?
No, I mean, I, I, I read the minutes from, from the last meeting. It seems like, you know, there was a couple of things that, that we asked for that, that were, were approved, some variances and things of that nature. No, I think that's holding us up is, is just the engineering requirements. That's, that's my understanding.
For you, Dave, did you want to, are you good with, did you have anything to add or?
Um, no, I, we need to discuss the, the needs that to be here from ZBDA, so it isn't too small for instance to get.
Right. Okay, um, so commission, um, what is your question?
So what, what project is this tied to?
There's multiple projects in the area that need tied to. Um, it's, it's not, but it's not like a whole, like the asphalt plant that's on site there that's running every day, all day. That's not the operation that we have set up there. We might operate out of that location 15 or 20 times through the season. So it's, it's a temporary portable plant that may come in and may come out a little bit. But, um, but it's, it's not a huge operation to use on a daily basis. There's some residential work. Um, there's some work that is a recycle company right, right in front of the area that I think he has to stop and prove. There's some work in the right way up there for him, the de-sell. So it's things of that nature.
So what makes it temporary is projects, technically, correct?
The temporary is just a type of, this type of, of batching plant that is. So our current batch plant, the side load that you see up in here in those pictures, everything on it is hydraulic, it has hydraulic waves. So in a matter of four to six hours, we can have that plant brought and moved to another location.
So if you put it, it's temporary, what you want to put there is not temporary. So if you have another project somewhere else, you want to put it there, then?
We would ask for, yeah, we would ask for opinion, temporary approval for, for this season, right? And then possibly at the end of the season, if there's work in the area, we, we apply again, you know, for next season. Just depends on our workload and where our work is.
Um, I guess this question would be for, for Dave or Sir Met. As far as the waivers, that's going to change. Council says yes to write the, all these things, um, or they say no to all these things. No matter what, one way or another, this site plan will have alterations based on waivers received or waivers did not, correct?
No. No, he already listed all the waivers needed on the site plan. If all granted by council, then, then technically they're not changing it.
Because the site plan that we got today, I don't have, that has the changes in it?
Yeah, I just listing the waivers.
I have a copy of that one.
On sheet four.
But I mean, it's?
As far as the plan sheet and the layout, everything you see with the dimensions and burn is located, that will not change. We will have to advise that we add it in the road section, discussing some of the engineering requirements.
So are we still only 50 feet away from the railroad?
This is perfectly, it's further than that.
It's, um, I just looked at all this. I think it's 120. That would need one of the areas.
And there won't be any kind of burn or fencing or anything for, for the materials to keep it away from the railroad tracks?
They are required to have 50 foot burn, that's heat burn, that's not variance.
So if you can see on the site plan, or as I said, this site plan will not change. You can see where our facility is and where our aggregate piles are. There's another parcel property in between the property line and the railroad for where that material is going to be set.
I'm sorry, I don't understand that. Can you show me on mine?
Yeah.
250.
Cause I'm looking at this.
So there's a line on the line. So this, this is our operation right here.
Yeah.
These are those piles you're asking about.
Yeah.
The railroad is over here and this is the adjacent property. So you have an adjacent property separating our operation.
Okay.
But like I said, this will not change. It's just the, the notes.
But didn't you say there would be additional paving might have to be done or that quantity waiting, you want to waive the burn? So the burn would have to be added to this now and now, right?
So please forward. I have a couple of gate views, what they're asking with water being done, sanitation is a little bit.
So general notes, I have a bunch of general notes in here that we do, I don't know, we do standard.
Yeah, that's out camber.
Even this is a little, a little plank, but water being done. We're not doing anything, but we're all requirements for, for the water main, installing water main. Anything that regards to water. Sanitary steward, we don't have any. Our facility, we're just a plastic portable, house is, uh, delivered at the site, a lot of our operations. But paving, uh, we don't intend to pave on site. Uh, we don't have any customers. It's a stable gravel area where our planes are part of vehicles, like mix or trucks. I mean, that's made this. It's already there, it's much required, so we don't.
Are you looking for a waiver for the retention plan?
Yes.
Is that laborable to us?
Uh, yeah, the plan does not say that. It says it's not required, but you, you do need a waiver for that. I can make it, you tell us.
Yeah, I think like to go forward and from my perspective, that was for the year. I would personally like you to go to council first, acquire the waivers, um, make more itemized lists so that everybody knows and understands what they're waiving. And like I said, in a timely manner that Sir Met can give feedback to council because they'll have to make that decision in less than a week.
I can add that.
Okay. Sir Met, are you good with that turnaround on the feedback for that for council?
Yes, but I, I, for the record, I need to, we need to state those item by item here. This way, or the same items go to council, no surprises.
Yeah, is there a way to compare, because it says waiver needed, but can you put your requirements of what will be waived? What, you know?
That's, that's what I meant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the applicant will state.
What?
We all agree on which waivers to go to council, the release of the plan.
But what is being waived is mine. All it says is waiver needed for sanitary. But it doesn't state what actually being waived is.
So can we just like include that in the, um, same engineering standards?
No, that's an umbrella waiver.
Well, that's what I, so what we, that's.
Yeah, so we didn't want something more itemized and detailed so that council can hit each item. Each item will have to be waived, correct, Sir Met?
Yes.
Yes.
How we can go through them really good? I mean, shouldn't take one or two?
Every, yeah, every item will need to be waived. It'll be an individual vote for each item? Is that, I believe it would be.
Uh, it's.
Cause if it's a variance, it would be individual votes.
And well, for the sake of time for council, I think we need to request one waiver for all items listed. Unless council feels that one of these items cannot be approved, then, then you pick and choose.
I believe that, Brian, are you good with that?
I mean, we could always go in as, as one. And then if somebody on council at the meeting, you know, says that they have a, an issue with one of the items, then we can separate that out.
Well, we're not.
Okay, so you can go through the list really quick.
Okay.
There are questions for waived.
We're not waiving it though.
We're not waiving.
If it is waived.
We're not.
Is the waiver temporary based on, it's going to be on in here that, I mean, the basis of a waiver is because to not put an investment in a property that's not going to last a year or over either, correct? Is that the basis of not creating it to standards?
But we're, we're talking about things like parking lot. I mean, this is a temporary batch plant that they, for this material, there's no, no public visiting and no handy at the parking space. But the engineering standards call for a parking. That's one of the waivers. They're asking for a waiver, the parking lot requirement.
Question.
Do we hold the other batch plan to these engineering standards?
They never made it to this stage. They just ran with the site plan, conditional approval, they're gone.
So, great.
We listed the same requirements.
If this batch plant wasn't called temporary, would its requirements be?
Absolutely.
So.
Absolutely, we would not recommend anywhere if it's permanent.
So where I'm going is this, this plan existed last year. It's existing this year. And I'm willing to predict it will come back next year. So at some point in time, we're going to stop calling it temporary.
That's where I'm confused in the word temporary.
Well, I think the temporary is my understanding, which is that it's portable. Right, and so it's temporary, that its usage is only temporary.
I understand that the.
Nothing's temporary for us.
Correct.
But.
We're holding the property to a permanent definition.
But the fact that it's portable, there's probably no, um, I don't want to sound like I'm looking for nickels and dimes, which is probably no taxes being paid on either.
I wouldn't think so.
If you leave it there over the letter, personal property tax.
Yeah.
There's no, um, benefit to it. Because it's portable.
Correct.
Okay, so everything that's going to come in here is like big trucks, loads of cement, correct? And that's going to use our roads to haul it and there's like no benefit to fix the roads?
I mean, I mean, they will be using your roads, yes, but I mean, we're, we're open to, I mean, helping the, the village out with, with things on, on property if it needed. Um, you know, we construct roads, we construct sidewalks, we construct driveways. I mean, there's things we can do better.
Cause that's a public street right there. Iafredi is ours, right? Is it still called Iafredi?
It is public, yeah, it is public.
Not that, I mean, there's 26 mile two, but that road is our road to maintain, correct?
And I would also ask that, uh, the, um, list, that we receive a list at a timely manner? Mr. Meisner?
Yes, sir.
That we receive the list of waivers?
Waivers.
Waivers at a timely manner?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the whole point of the meeting tonight is that we just got this information today.
Yeah.
So if we get this list tomorrow, we'll send it out to everybody with the agenda packet.
Well, I'd like the feedback from Sir Met included in that as well. I think we can send it out, it, it too stated, but it was feedback should probably.
Yeah, I mean, we normally, we normally send the agenda packet out tonight or tomorrow. So as long as we can get all the information by tomorrow, Rachel can send it out with the normal agenda packet.
Okay, and Mr. West. So Sir Met, if we're just tabling, do we have to list the items requiring a waiver here?
I would still recommend that so there's no confusion and nobody's wasting any words time by going to council and we missed one item. They have to go again next month.
Okay.
Which first item?
Um, okay, uh, Rachel, can you note this all for this one? Thank you. If I can, is ready or?
Okay, so the first one is the trash disposal.
The what?
They require to have a trash disposal.
Trash disposal.
Um, based on the ordinance, I, I have to check into that, but I, long as hidden from public, from by other buildings and then they only have an enclosure itself. It's just if it's visible from a public road or from adjacent property.
Yeah, so their requirement is that they want to use a 20 yard dumpster, no improvement.
Okay.
Would they need a waiver for three?
Uh, long as I can see where it's going and long that nature is not deal from public over coming.
So it doesn't need one?
No.
Good.
So is that not on the list?
No.
Where could it go then, if it's not going to be, can't be visible from adjacent property or a road?
Well, it's part of the site plan, it should show on the location on the site plan.
But it doesn't need an enclosure? If it's not visible from a road or visible from adjacent property?
Oh, I see it over here next to the, by the railroad. The 20 CYD dumpster, is that what we're talking about?
Yes. Yeah, I see it too.
So it's right near. I guess my concern with the railroad is when things go up in a dumpster truck and it gets dumped and it bounces and flies. I mean, I certainly don't want to see a train going off the tracks because something ended up over there that, um, especially for something that didn't, you know, it's all temporary, um, that could cause an issue. Not only been a lot of train issues in the past couple of years. Um, so I'm concerned about being something that's, that it's close to that.
Yeah, so there, there are trees and I believe there is a burn that runs along there and also a fence. We do tarp, the tarp goes 20 yard dumpsters. Um, they, they just get tarped and hauled off. It's not like a typical perceptible thing to pick up in the air, help inside the truck. Uh, but we could, we could put it somewhere else.
I wouldn't mind it being farther away from the railroad tracks. Cause it, it looks like this whole south borderhead is all trees and it backs up to the railroad, correct?
Yeah, I, we can.
If I look at what's trees, it looks like it's in the middle of trees, to be honest with you, the dumpster. But it's hard to tell from this drawing what exactly.
We can add that when he comes back and.
So when we put it back, just put it someplace.
Okay, we'll just keep a note of that though for reference.
I got the ordinance, I found the ordinance.
Thank you.
If I can read it.
Okay.
Oh, this is dumpsters and trash boards enclosures shall be completely screened from view. They do have four standards. Enclosure shall be constructed of similar masonry or wood material that the buildings to make their accessory. Enclosure shall be at least six feet and over, no more than eight feet tall. Obscure all waste and or containers of wood and obscure. Work gate shall be installed. Um, no enclosure shall be permitted within a required front yard, street side. Side yard. Which is that, that corner lines external side yard. And all dumpsters shall be located on a six inch concrete pad. And I'm going to refer that to section.
So we would need a waiver then, because we're not putting a six inch cement pad in, right?
Yeah, we need a waiver.
Or I could just, I could just ultimate it, Ross.
Let me, I, just for future, that is not a council decision, that's a ZBDA.
And ZBDA is a variance.
So, so you are requesting a dumpster?
It's a convenience thing for us, it doesn't have to be.
Okay, because that one won't be able to be waived. That will require ZBDA, an application for ZBDA. And that will process, which will probably add another month and a bit to you.
Oh, that's cool, sure.
Yeah, but didn't you hear that just, who worked on it? I think it's that.
So, so this garbage is not coming from, from the plant site itself. Typically, it's coming from the other projects we have in the area and it's just convenient to come back to the plant and throw the dumpster. I can get, I can get a disposal dumpster. So it's purely a convenience.
Okay. Uh, Sir Met, continue then with your list, please.
The Ajax have a, I'm not sure. So you're, I'm assuming you do some, so you're going to leave this from the site.
I'll leave this.
Is that acceptable to the planning?
If the subplant requires a dumpster, then it should have a dumpster. Your authority needs it or not, it's irrelevant, isn't it?
Does the site plan require a dumpster?
Yeah, you're just right.
Does the site plan, it said a dumpster?
What does it mean for the wire?
Well, that's the same, the farmhouse is all area used for storage and trash and other wastes.
So it's not required, but those are the requirements that you have.
You have, yes.
Okay.
And everyone can say that we need a dumpster, flip it on the ground. That's bad, you look at that.
Okay, Sir Met.
Okay. Next one is the warming. Now, they don't have a building, so they're not required to hook up to anything. But they do need a temporary and that, that just falls under D W. So that does not need a waiver.
Does not?
No, there's no, no connection for both. They don't need poker quarter for the consumption. They do need it for temporary and they, they can just simply ask for a temporary construction meter from D W, just like they need.
If they look at height.
Just hook up to the height or whatever.
Okay.
So we do not need a waiver for anything to the water?
Not for the water.
How long does the temporary last?
As long as they use it. There's no limit on, on rental, I should say.
These are weird things to me.
I was going to say they get free water.
All regular businesses are required to have a dumpster, required to have a, have water. So if they're planted there for the next eight years, that hydrant is just their water source and not?
Not portable, this is construction water. This is not drinking water.
This is the water they get put in on.
It's going to go to the concrete.
Yeah, for the dust.
For the trucks and dust.
For dust and concrete, that's, that's all, so this is not portable or.
And it's metered like what, like any other business or is it besides a hydrant or?
Yeah, so we, we put a deposit down and it's usually 15 or 25 hundred dollars. And then as we consume the water, it'll be a way in the deposit and once the deposit away, then we pay.
Pledge.
Yeah, normal, normal business, uh, commercial or industrial, if they have a building, they have to commit to build water with a meter, a permanent, permanent meter. This is a temporary use, so they get a temporary meter attached to the height, locked by the D W and right by the D W every month. And you go, you build the avenue.
I guess to me that the word temporary, you speak, turn it off, but there's no time limit, it's on temporary.
You can put a time limit on temporary. And they, they offer to come back here annually to renew.
So that would be a stipulation. So that would be a stipulation, you learn?
You can put a time limit on that.
Okay.
So five years maximum, ten years maximum.
So there's a schedule on plans, our, our operating, just depending on, on workable, like we haven't done anything out over this year, but our operating, it, it varies, but it doesn't start any earlier than, than mid-April, and does not go any later than the end of December. So we shut down severe work months. Because it's not that close like, like a normal concrete plant, it's a permanent closed plant, the building around it, ours is not.
Go ahead, Serret.
Sanctuary with, uh, sanctuary, they're not proposing any permanent structure, so they're, they will be bringing in for jobs on site, which is, in our opinion, is acceptable for this type of business. Again, there is no, no permanent building. It's not a retail, commercial, and a seasonal.
Does that require a waiver?
No.
Okay.
What, do we need a waiver on?
Uh, here?
Yeah, I thought we knew the reason why, but we need a waiver on. Okay, so these first three that you've read, from the trash enclosure to the water main to the sanctuary, do not require a waiver.
Yeah, hang on, let me show them.
Okay.
So paving.
Go ahead, Serret.
Pavement is required, whether it's temporary, permanent, whatever. So they need a twenty-foot paved roadway with concrete curves. That would be a waiver request. Now, on site is ground, correct, still?
Correct.
Okay, so the second one would be a waiver from the concrete requirement of the, of the parking area or the operation area. So the engineering calls for a seven-inch concrete, do we request that also? Six-inch curves, seven-inch concrete pavement. Uh, number three, I think if our department is satisfied, I think that we got an email from Josh saying he's, he's good with access and circulation.
I believe so. I believe that's taken.
Yeah, I think it was started on, on the minutes. Okay.
I think that one was also.
Traffic study, now we don't know how many trucks this, this additional operation is generating, so if, um, we will go with your recommendation. If a truck study is needed, if it's needed, then we need to request a waiver or provide one, one of the two.
Are you requesting a waiver for the truck study? Was that on your list?
Uh, no, it's not on my list, we don't have to do these.
So that's another waiver. Parking, if parking is not required by zoning, it's not required by engineering.
So no waiver or CVA requirements on that? Dave, parking?
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't need parking requirements, it will be a, so we need a CVA, posture requirement.
Okay, so he's going to need to go to CVA for parking?
Because I believe I talked to their applicant, he, he, you know, I don't know if that's like kind of funny, but I told him the spaces he needed, they have plenty of room to be in. The spaces, when they get put in, are, will have to be made.
So that would actually put you over to CVA?
So if he can't get parking waived, then you can't get the...
But if he gets the parking waived, then he doesn't need to go to CVA?
Correct.
I thought CVA didn't waive the parking. No, engineering is bringing in parking requirements. They're bringing in parking requirements, if he's waived from an engineering perspective, then the requirements would be Dave, speak for me now.
Okay, not sure, they, we're looking at two different standards. Unfortunately, sometimes they conflict with each other. We do got a couple where they just crash into each other. Unfortunately, one has one board approving it, then zoning still leaves CVA, doesn't go to council, it's CVA action. Everything else, if it go to ordinances, go to council.
Okay, so he would need both done for the parking?
Yeah, personally, conceivably.
So he?
Yeah, it just changes your criteria, yeah.
So if it gets waived at, at council by engineering, will it still need to be waived by CVA?
Correct.
Okay. So parking is going to need to go both ways then?
Because I don't believe the parking requirement was horrendous, it's like, surprise to come up, I think it was like a few spaces or something.
But they need to be paid if he's got to crush concrete.
The, the site line calls for two spots, two, two parking spots.
And if it's easier for you, I mean, than doing that, you can put in parking spots, but...
It's just two spots, it's all we need, I can put two spots.
Trying to look up right now, I just can't.
Do that.
Is that quicker to move the CVA?
You can't break your concrete from?
Yeah. Does he allow you to do crushed concrete?
Well, that's, that's one of the waivers requested. If the whole site is crushed concrete or gravel, I, we're not going to have to pave a twenty-foot by forty-foot, twenty by twenty just for two spots, that would be silly. It would get destroyed by just the equipment moving around.
The cars will be on it?
It will be destroyed if a car will not find those two spots. This is how machinery are you talking, industrial operations? Things are practical, things are not. I mean, if we're talking thirty, forty parking spots, yes, but two?
Yeah, all it says here in the ordinance, it's lumps all industrial research establishments together. It says it's five spaces plus one for each employee, and largest working shift, folks. Have to have them made?
He would need six spots. Okay, so that would probably then, I mean, obviously it's all, you're up to you, six spots or, I mean, we probably want to solid that up, right, or be guessing on this?
Would you rather have six spots paved up on your facilities than over there in the yard that's ever gone?
Where do Ajax park?
Yeah, I don't know, that's a figure. What's that? I might ask, oh, what are they doing for parking?
It looks like there's a spot in the front.
Like one, or like, or is he gonna like, maybe like a shared usage kind of agreement? Just throwing that out there.
Do you really need those two spots inside the water facility, or these guys can just have enough of these equipment and go, not try to?
We'd have to do that in the end, we do not, we do not need any parking, that's not, not for our operation.
Yeah, but it still needs to be waived, right?
Yes, correct, it's still in the ordinance, it's still.
So we just put that on a list of things to waive?
But it all has to go to CVA.
And even that question, because it's, it's, it's showing up in two locations, which I think is something that needs to be looked at in the future, so it doesn't show up in two, two locations.
Correct.
Because we got the GBA and council, so somehow we need to make sure that's corrected in the future.
Correct.
Okay, or a shared usage agreement, is that practical, Dave?
Yes, yeah, in this case, I think it's practical. Um, it says, yeah, but the law here, I'm not, kind of going to go way back with the numbers, but it says nothing in subsections shall be construed to prevent collective provision, law-street parking for two or more uses. We just have to get a signed agreement that they could collectively use the other park at that.
Okay, we can do that.
You'd see.
Okay, but you do, so if you've got the shared usage agreement, then you don't need a waiver for either. So leave parking on the waiver, providing you supply the shared usage agreement? Okay.
Okay, uh, next one is the storm system, which has a couple of parts to it. And the detention pond and, and underground pipes collect the, the storm water. So you will be asking for a complete waiver of the storm system, which includes all pipes, catch basing, and detention pond. Because again, if, if parking is waived and everything stays as gravel, they're not increasing any runoff, and we're okay with that. But if they pave anything, that triggers back the storm system. So you need catch bases, pipes, detention pond, here it is. So that's, that's a big, big hinge on, on, on the paving requirement.
Okay, so I'm going to ask this question, if he doesn't need the parking waiver, because he gets an agreement, then does he need the storm system waiver?
Yeah, it's part of the ordinance.
Yeah, if no, no parking and no access, no paved access road and no curves, then you don't need the, the, uh, the, the storm system. But it works hand in hand, so...
So if he gets, doesn't get the waiver for A, if he gets a waiver for A, then he doesn't need the waiver for this?
Still need to request it.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we're not waiting automatically just because there is no parking.
Okay.
It's part of those. Uh, the last one would be... That, that one says you need an operation maintenance agreement for the, for the pond, but if the pond is waived, then there's no... I would still list it, access, access keyment operation maintenance agreement.
Access easement what?
Access eas, uh, access easement operation maintenance agreement for the pond. If the pond, the pond department gets waived, then you don't need this one either. But that needs to be listed, so it's all, it's a dominant one. Um, the rest are just form of landscaping requirements that we just generally state those need to be approved by planning division.
It's one of the areas that are needed.
Yeah. You're good with landscaping requirements, are you asking for a waiver on that?
Yes.
If you ask for a waiver on landscaping requirements, that's going to put you over to CVA.
So that three things on the CVA, parking, dumpster enclosure, parking, and landscaping, right?
Uh, no dumpster enclosure, if he's trying to take out and not use it, just have no trash on site, it's fine. If there is trash on site, then the enclosures need it. I didn't hear exactly what was gonna, you know, transpire.
You're saying you're removing the trash?
Or removing the trash. So if there's no trash, no dumpster.
Okay.
I still don't understand it, so if McDonald's comes here and says, listen, we're going to take our trash home each night, I don't want to put a dumpster up.
Because we're not generating any trash in the site.
But you're probably getting trash off whatever, loaded on these trucks.
No, no, if, the only trash we would get would be coming in on our trucks, had nothing to do with the concrete operation, unloading it out of the truck at the end of the day. That's it, I can have that happen elsewhere.
Again, this is not a permanent operation year around, it's seasonal, it's temporary, that's why, so if they're not generating any trash, or they, they haul their personal trash.
So there's no lighting required either, so this is like a dusk to dawn type operation?
Correct.
You won't be operating in the dark?
So that was one of the general questions about hours of operation, and I'm glad that you brought that up, because Dave?
Well, what, what we, with the landscape, what are, what are we doing with the landscape requirements? What's where we go with lighting?
Screening, right?
It's going to be variance, because you're deficient in width.
Okay.
You'd get burned along all external property lines.
Okay.
We already talked to your designer, he said he's going to go for, he said he'd go for variance.
So do, do we know what Ajax's hours are? Are you, are you matching Ajax's hours?
I can tell you they will, they'll work a lot more hours than you. I can't speak for Ajax, I, but I know the operation and they, they do work a lot.
Do they start before seven AM?
Yes.
But that means that they may just, you know, get worked up, right, but not fire up all the?
I can't speak for Ajax, I can't.
Right.
Because not, normal operating hours, seven to seven, but that's on construction site. For permanent site?
Yeah, I had to see, because you're not buddies up against any residential areas, so I had to see those hours being extended. I mean, particularly when it doesn't get dark until last night.
In the summer, yeah.
Google Maps lists their hours as seven AM to three PM. Google Maps, I'm not sure how accurate this is, but Google Maps lists their hours as seven AM to three PM for Ajax.
I know that's not true, because I saw a truck going down ninety-four. At, at a clock at night, they were doing...
Um, I do have a question, have you, I, I'm trying to find the fire saving report, I do find some notes here from fire saving. Um, you have a fuel tank on site, have you answered to those questions yet?
Um, we have fuel tank on site, we usually have an inspection by the fire department, we put barrier all around, and we have, uh, fire extinguishers and the dog theme, so we follow all.
Okay, so it says that you have, I'm just reading the notes here as I'm talking to you, so it says you've had one on site in the past, but you do not see one listed on this drawing, is that accurate?
I'll add that, sure.
Okay, please. Uh, if you do, then as you've just mentioned, meet safety codes such as protections, protection spilled kits and extinguishers.
Good.
Okay, um, and then will their structure be temporary or permanent, I'm pretty sure we answered that. Again, if you have one in the past, if so, it needs to be up to fire code along with necessary safety precautions such as fire extinguishers.
We did have an inspection last year.
Okay. And so, and then the last one, I would just say I would like to have something signed in writing that you are only renting the hydrant, um, has this been discussed with you?
No.
Some sort of agreement with the office that you are renting the hydrant, at any time that they can, there is an emergency, they will remove your access to it, um, regardless of any operations that are taking place at the time. And that, that would be what the agreement would be, that they would get first priority to that, which I assume you would want, so.
Yeah.
So that's what I see here, although I'm looking for the fire saving report and I still have.
Was there one, the last one I have is February sixteen.
February sixteen, that's the same one I have, yeah, sorry, I have that here.
And that, that was there in all other regards?
We weren't in the operating, yeah.
Yeah. Does it give a approval or recommendation or anything?
It does say recommending approval.
It did?
Yeah.
I just can't pull it, this is the only thing, like, was those, were those notes? Okay, so no other, the last one that we had for a waiver was the easement operation maintenance agreement for the pond.
Correct.
And landscaping, what are we doing with that? CVA?
It does test what does he need.
Okay.
What does he have and what does he need? What does he have and what does he need?
He needs fifty feet, and it looks like, the design is trying to estimate, it looks like he had twenty feet in terms of, it all natural presentation, twenty foot.
And that can be waived by council?
No, it's only issued at that point.
Okay. So, good with the requirements and, okay. Problem?
What about fencing? Okay, I went over there to look and I just drove the whole property. There was nothing to stop me from going everywhere, actually. I was kind of like, how far could I go? Is there anything required with fencing to keep people out of there?
At least there was a way to go.
I went on the weekend and I thought, you know, I would just be looking over the fence, you know what I mean? But there was no fence, there was no gate, I just drove around. I'm going back to my younger days and my stupid youth, like, you know, empty place to go hang out.
That's what would stop us from doing that, though.
Yeah, but it was tough to get my car back there and at least the cop could see it over the road or, you know, it was like going to the park. At least the car was stuck at the park. I might have walked. Trying to tell his own property.
Dave, any feedback on fencing?
From a security fencing standpoint, in terms of the total requirement of security fencing, I did find one clause in here in terms of for landscaping, though. It does have a hidden way down. It says, "The planning commission may permit the reduction of required landscaping when based on review of the landscape plan and other relevant information. The proposed belt includes the preservation of existing trees and vegetation sufficient to provide the required screening." Now, we did ask from the app for a landscape plan, it was never submitted. It was just general dimensions showing 20 feet as opposed to the 50 foot requirement.
How do we get the fire set? Do we get a report on things like this from the sheriff?
No.
Oh, as far as public safety and security and...
So you're saying that the planning commission can approve sufficient...
Provide a landscape plan. Provide that landscape property to it if it's not submitted.
So Ajax, I'm looking at Ajax all plans. They do have a green belt that goes around with some kind of landscaping. They do have a swing gate on the main edges. The fence, the entire site, I don't get the... But it looks like there's a landscape burn around the site. It's about 65 feet wide. Going across it. So just, you just got to plan out what's out there on site, what the existing conditions are?
Yeah, it's gotta be done in a plan. You just can't come in with, we can see in the neighborhood photographs and general dimensions out there, so it's gotta actually draw up shows what's out there so we can really feel what it's opaque in. I mean, I did find, and I'm recording that to my review on May 7th, so I gave the commission. And it is... It does state in the ordinance for, it's a special standards for natural plants, for concrete plants, asphalt plants, is the plant itself shall be screened on all property lines by 50-foot wide uniform buffer or strip or a screened wall fence and with an adjacent green belt in compliance with Section 5 or 5-91. It also allows the planning commission to require additional landscaping and screening for a rate determined as necessary to prevent negative impact on adjacent cottages or right-of-way.
Is screening represented on your site plan, like as far as fencing?
No, it's just the existing conditions that are on there.
So what are your thoughts on that?
One, then we obviously see a landscape plan without showing what you need to have here, where it is vegetation. You get a few ports through and the intent is to screen the property professionally from noise, from light, from dust and things, but until you have an actual plan in front of you, make that determination. I don't know how you could, you know, modify it.
Okay. Okay, and Dave? So Matt, do you have anything else to...
I'm good.
Dave, anything else do you? Anybody else have a petition?
Nothing.
Any questions? Just to confirm, I have six things for asking from council to waive.
Five. The landscaping is...
I have six.
I have the paving requirement of 28-foot road with concrete and curbs, the waiver from the concrete requirement currently is required to have seven inches of concrete as crushed concrete slash gravel, traffic study request waiver, parking. Requesting waiver contingent upon shared agreement, the detention pond and the access easement operation maintenance agreement.
I would add to the detention pond, the storm system, pipes, catch basing.
I have a complete waiver of all pipes, catch basing, detention pond.
And then, I'm sorry, access easement operation maintenance agreement?
Yep, that was number six.
I must have just combined it to...
That's what I did, too.
And then... For planning, we have the landscape and parking.
For ZVA.
For ZVA, unless you want to present...
Well, the parking would be with the waiver. If you can get the shared agreement. He won't go to ZVA for parking.
Right.
And then the landscape would need to go to ZVA unless he brings the landscape plan here and then we could waive it.
Right.
And you modify it.
Modify our waiver.
Modify it. Parking's not needed.
Right.
Go to ZVA if it comes with shared agreement.
Right.
There's only issue we have left is the equipment. Is what we need goes to ZVA is the equipment, it doesn't need the separation distance from property lines. The apartment's 250 feet, I don't think you made it, but it's gonna need, and you have 120 feet showing.
I thought that was discussed the last occasion and I thought it was, the variance was granted.
There's no variance that has been granted.
Yeah, nothing?
Everything has been tabled up to this point. There's been discussion, but there's been nothing granted.
Okay, what's under the standards of that?
Yeah, through ZVA you have variance.
Probably move the equipment, right?
They do show the equipment 250 from the river, but only 133 from the side, you know, property.
The problem is to establish pack difficulty and it gets random. We don't have the authority to grant that separation.
So that's the ZVA.
That's the ZVA, yes.
Well, he's gotta go to ZVA anyway. Can you package the trash enclosure and then, I know he said he can take it off, but he's gotta go to ZVA anyway. Make it off dumpster, add your landscape into it, add your apartment to it.
Yeah, just move it in front of them.
Or we can move, like you're saying, we can move the equipment further away from property line.
Yeah, all of those 250 feet, many property lines, if that's newable.
So with the movement of the equipment, then he doesn't need any ZVA?
So yes, you're trying to...
Sure, trying to avoid the ZVA.
Possibly not. Yeah, I'm not gonna say yes because the landscape plan has not been in front of this commission, we'll look at the landscape plan, so...
Okay.
But he does everything you tell?
And you just can't put trash out there and say, he's gonna, now it comes to an all these trash out there, then a certain part of the ordinance that starts the code enforcement action.
Yeah, same with noise, most any operational violations, the trash will be one.
Okay, then I do have one just general question. What is the process, just for knowing the future as far as doing this on a temporary annual renewal basis?
Once this is granted, a special land use run with the property.
Correct.
A site plan runs concurrently with itself, property law consumes the same.
Okay.
For that to come back, you change it and then, you know, you can come back. So roughly, you could have a review on every year. I wouldn't tie it into a actual application or anything like that. You can get an update to make sure everything's in place. But wouldn't have, it'd be hard pressed to, you know, try to overturn the site plan that you, or a special land use you already ran, it just doesn't want to come back.
Can we attach the renewal to the waivers?
Yeah, I don't know the waiver process as well, variance. I know variance is run with the property, too. Does ZVA run with the property waivers? Well, I don't have a very answer for whether a waiver can be attached to it.
Can we find that out?
The simple answer would be if they're not changing the site plan or any operational or any features on site, waivers will stand.
Can we just make a good faith agreement?
Because it's just an extension, they ask for annually. It's just an extension.
Right.
Yeah.
Can we just make a good faith agreement that they come in annually, like, how do we...
Enforce the temporary?
Yeah.
This... Try to get straight, this is not temporary.
Right.
The use itself, because it's seasonal, I'm gonna determine seasonal, not temporary, because in other ordinance it's determined seasonal. This is the actual land use, the actual improvement, setting with the land, input to it. And the temporary basis is just because they can drop down a team, it's temporary, but it's really run with the land. It's a seasonal use.
And that's why I have a...
Me, too. It's not temporary.
Not temporary.
So if we approve that site plan, whatever comes next has to use it that way and it has site plan in it.
We're gonna follow everything to the team.
Well, it still falls under building permit, doesn't it? So you can put a condition on the building permit to expire annually.
Yeah. We'd need an operating permit, like a CVO, right?
Yep.
And you can attach... You can attach the timeframe to the CVO, correct? No?
Yeah, I don't know if the, that's sort of, I'll get an application, it's more of a...
Is there anything that it can't be attached?
Do you have, a lot of time, other communities, they have the certificate of compliance tied to business license on the process. And you have to come in annually, you get that certificate renewed, and at that point you relook at everything to make sure it's still following the original site plan. And also, too, if something comes on, doesn't, the code enforcement sees something, they can always get any time and go see if they're following site plan. Because the building official, probably, and the fire department always has a right, there's building code and fire code to enter a site to make sure everything's being followed as well.
But we don't probably have that. Got that answer, okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay, motion?
Motion to table. Results of ZVA and village councils.
Do we need a motion to send the waivers to camps?
I'll do that. I'll do two motions.
Okay, okay.
So we have a motion to table. And then we'll follow up with the next one. Is there a second for that?
Sorry.
Roll call? Russell Miller?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
Hold on, motion up here to Lucy Noldiver?
Yes.
Yes, Delmi Rodsack?
Yes.
Chris Dover?
Yes.
Okay, and then, motion listing the waiver requirements and direction to council, recommendation.
Motion to, uh, take the clerk's list and put it in there as part of the motion. I'm not gonna reread all that.
Okay.
And forward it to council for their consideration and/or ZVA, depending where things go.
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Uh...
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so are... You're good with where you're going?
I'm good.
Yeah, so if you can get that, um...
I'll get everything tomorrow.
Yeah, get that over just so that...
Even moving the structure and everything.
Right. Council can get a sufficient time to review that for next meeting, which is Tuesday of next week. Okay, so I do want to address this real quick so that you know, um, in our new business, we have a change of date request for our August meeting, um, as Dave is not available. So Dave is available the week before. I believe everybody else is good the week before, so we're looking at a date request for July 29th, I believe. Let me double check. July 29th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM.
So before you make that, though, we just now created a ZVA meeting, which falls on the 29th.
There has not been an application submitted for ZVA.
So if he submits it tomorrow, that's supposed to be...
Still has to print it in the newspaper and get all of that.
Yeah.
So...
It would never make it.
We specifically made the ZVA as the last week of the month, so we had enough time for it to be published. Does that give us enough time?
I have to give it to the newspaper tomorrow at noon to get it published in next week's week.
Okay, so the ZVA, then, that means that...
Well, it's fine, we'll do, what time does ZVA normally meet?
It's the fourth Tuesday in March.
What time? Seven?
Seven, yeah.
We can do 7:30.
Well, it sounds like we're not gonna... So that means that the soonest ZVA meeting that this would be able to come into would be the fourth Tuesday in August.
Correct.
If we have to go.
If you're not...
If, yeah.
If we have to go.
If you have to go, I'll, I can try to move the equipment, I gotta make sure it'll fit.
Okay.
And then we'll get a landscaping plan outside of my... Okay, so...
I mean, we can make, we can make it work.
With the assumption that we're not done having a ZVA in July, then you guys' meeting could have an assignment.
Okay, so then...
We don't have to stick to the Tuesday.
We just worked out a Tuesday just for the sake of it.
You want to do Wednesday?
I'm not gonna be here. I should travel that day, so...
Yeah, I'm good with the Tuesday. I think everybody has checked their schedule, that they're good with Tuesdays, so...
So a motion for the 29th, following, if happens, a ZVA meeting.
Okay, so you're moving the August meeting, correct, to 7:29 at 7:30? Correct. Is there a second for that?
So, so 7:00. Or...
Oh, 7:00. Okay.
Okay, do you have a ZVA meeting ahead of that?
It sounds like we're not gonna.
Oh, okay.
We're trying to avoid the ZVA.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so you know, now that our next planning meeting is on the last Tuesday of this month, which these items will still be tabled for, you'll need your waivers and then you'll have to come back here for final approval after you've acquired waivers. Okay.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, so, planning agenda procedures, there were two things, some more discussion. There were a couple things that obviously came up today, but in general, there was a suggestion made that when things come into the office, requests come into the office, that we immediately put them on our agenda, so that they're there, they're present, they are, if they're not ready to come to the table, then we just table them. Do we like having the full package by the time it gets here? Do we want it on the agenda to know when it's there? It's basically, the suggestion was as soon as they put down their deposit, which we're doing payment a little differently now, we're doing like a escrow kind of payment structure where they come in, they put down some, and then any action that they require works against that. So do we like getting it all at the end and having the complete package and putting it on here, or would you like it to have a placeholder on the agenda?
So they started this thing in February, so this would have been on agenda February, March, April, May, June, July.
Correct.
So we'd be tabling it every...
So we'd be tabling it every month.
No, I don't think, there were a few months that they didn't come back.
No, but I mean, you may apply for all this back in February, right?
Yeah.
So the first fire set went out, so we go on our agenda in February.
That's what they're...
And we, it's not done for March, so we table it, it's not done for April, we table it.
Yeah, I think we should always...
Do they have to pay for every single time that they're on, or is on the agenda?
They pay for the, the processes that are taking place behind. So they're not necessarily paying for us. In, um, they don't pay them.
Seven years.
Yeah.
That's ZBA though, isn't it?
ZBA does, yes, they'll take the...
ZBA's on appearance, yeah.
So the question is, wait until there's a, what do you consider a full package?
Like a complete package, like a fire savvy report, a planning review, a, a, um, engineering review, like ready to go.
Are we making sure these things are happening?
Uh, I would say yes, yeah, I mean, they're taking place.
So if I make an application on, I don't know what date, June 15th, and the next planning meeting is...
July.
July 1st.
Correct.
So there's two weeks out, can, can fire savvy and all these things take place within the two weeks, or is that too short of a period of time?
It's too short of a period of time. It was just a suggestion, I'm not even really sure, it was, like just helping bring into light that is there, I guess.
Bring into what?
Light that it's like, it's being worked on, because everybody's getting this, which is the other part of the conversation, and everybody's getting, everybody's getting all the material and everything as we go, how's that for everybody? Like getting the emails and...
I've been reading it as content, I like...
I haven't been getting any emails.
You haven't been getting any emails from Becky?
No, I don't have my own dated emails.
Okay.
Yeah, I like, I like to read them as they came in.
So it would be something you would like to...
You sent the agenda on my flat mail.
Okay, these are coming from, these are coming from the office, these are coming from Becky. Becky is sending, prior she was just sending it to me, now she's sending it to everybody, everybody's being CC'd on every item, everything.
She must be sending it to the other...
She's probably sending it to the other one, I'll just, I'll see that you're added to it, so you can keep up on that. Did you have something?
So if you've got 15 projects going that haven't come to fruition yet, that would be on the agenda for notification and consent agenda? So we come in and we table that whole consent agenda, or we got to go through each one of those items to table each and every one, or can we just table what's not ready as being?
I think we'd be tabling individually, Sermet.
I, I just need clarification on this, um, are you requesting that full construction documents need to be completed?
No.
At the planning station, or do you need...
That's the other thing that we were going to discuss, the planning stage versus the building stage, that is the other thing that I wanted to discuss.
Going back to putting it on the agenda, could it be something that comes under communications that says, hey, this is in the future?
Okay.
Instead of putting it on the agenda for us to do anything with it, just in a communication saying, hey, here is an application that we received, watch for it to come on the agenda in the future.
I guess some other, I can't remember who I was talking to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wouldn't take a vote to table it.
Yeah.
Don't involve, I think, I know about basketball games this year.
I know agendas can be modified, amended at the, at the meeting, but it's gotta be some kind of deadline.
Was it, I'm sorry for doing that, was it?
Because when Rachel puts the agenda out, I'm sure she...
Has suggested other communities do that, I can't remember where, who brought it up to me.
Typically, that, that site plan application will come in, they pay, pay the fee, and then your consultants will, will review these plans and make recommendations to you, to be received like a week at least ahead before the meeting. That's what you're trying to do, right?
If I get, if I get a review, it's gotta be a lot of weeks before, 10 days?
Yeah.
Something like that, maybe about 10 days prior to that, to get that final, like, maybe I gotta call the applicant up, missing something or...
Right, but I guess the start of the conversation was, somebody, I don't know where it came from, asked if, when we receive the request for a site plan review, it goes immediately on the agenda, even though we tabled it for six months. So instead of doing that, we just put it in communication to say, hey, this person has applied, there's nothing for you to do yet, but keep your eye out for future something on the agenda.
It seems like a waste of your time.
Well, I mean, it would just be a list, I'm sure Becky probably keeps a list
Probably.
of active applications, so maybe she could just forward that report.
Maybe she could do a report that says, here's all of the active ones, and here's the stages that they're at, I don't, I don't know, I don't, if somebody puts in
Oh, we made some.
An application today, and there's nothing movement on it, and we have nothing from our professionals to be on the August agenda, I don't want that. If you don't have anything to look at and vote on and talk about, I don't like it.
Like she didn't even be there, if there's...
But if it's in the communications that, hey, this is coming in the future.
Right, Sermet?
So, this is what happened in Lance, and we, we had the same issue. That they, they come in, they slap the application, and we're not ready, planning commission don't have the full story.
Right.
So what are we doing here? It gets tabled. So a waste of everybody's time, there's a lot of questions unanswered, so what we've done simply in Lennox is, we, the consultant will contact the clerk directly and say, this application is not complete, so we don't recommend to be on the agenda until they fix these issues. And they stay off the agenda until your consultants are satisfied, and then...
I love that, yeah, I like that, I respect bringing it up.
Most other communities run like that, they don't put any automatic on the agenda, you have to go through the checklist and make sure everything is there, so you don't get partial information, so you gotta come through your package.
So it would be a self email from myself, Dave, fire side, fire, and madam clerk, this application is not complete, we don't recommend being on the agenda, or attached is our review letter and the bottom recommendation, denial or approval.
So the list, if we did correspondence, like you said, would just be part of our packet, it's not something we would have to approve or vote on, it would just be sitting there. This is what's coming.
No, it won't make its plan at all, you would know about it, but you're not gonna see it.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, it would only be part of correspondence, we would have to vote on it.
Okay, I didn't bring this up, but everybody's like, acting like it, I don't care if it's on the agenda until it's ready to go. That was just my suggestion, because somebody obviously asked if we could put it on the agenda when the request was received, wasn't me. Um, but that was my suggestion, if we were to put it on the agenda when the request is received, to put it in that instead of like an actionable item, that, that was just my suggestion.
I like that idea, so at least we know what's coming, and, and I think, didn't we make a spreadsheet as part of, maybe it was with Jeff?
There is a spreadsheet, yeah, a little booklet, as a process.
And so it's basically just something that Becky already keeps.
Yeah.
So she'd just be given it once a month as part of the packet, and we wouldn't have to vote on each item.
What's, what are the, how many days are required before planning?
Well, 10, 10 days.
That is the only thing, um, so in Lennox, it's 21 days. So, the consultants usually look at it first week or 10 days?
Yeah, but we're just, we're not putting it there that it's done or expected of you or of either.
I'm just saying that sometimes we, we contact or throw, um, some laundry list of comments back at the applicant, you're liking all these. So for Lennox, they have three weeks technically to revise it, and, and the clerks sometimes allow them to submit a week ahead, so they got two weeks.
But if you do the rain, rain essentially on these, if you're...
There is no way to make that.
My frustration, if I received an email this morning asking for variances, and we discussed it at the table tonight.
So why?
This should have been given to us 10 days ago to even review it.
Right.
I received it this morning, and I work today, so I didn't even review it until I got home from work at 2:30.
I haven't even seen it.
And the rest of us just heard it at the table, that's not...
So, I don't want anything on the agenda until we're ready to act.
Just because, just because, I, I do want to clarify, for those that do not know this, is Becky just received that, I just don't want her to... Look like no communication gave us blaming back. Right, I just want to make sure that that's known, that this wasn't like a lack of, it was just what we received from the applicant in the last couple days.
No, I was 100% not blaming anybody for it, I was just saying, I received it today, was asked to do something with it, and I had an hour and a half before the meeting to review it.
Right.
I don't disagree with that.
You were asked to do something with it?
He, this was his, his request for a waiver.
I mean, that can be himself just...
We should put that in the procedure book too.
Yeah? Okay, so maybe if there's a procedure that...
So I am not in favor of having anything put on the agenda immediately upon receipt of any type of application, I'm not in favor.
I like Rachel's idea, just putting something in the communications, and then adopting it on your agenda until professionals have given it to you.
What's, is there a preference, one way or another, I don't, I'm a different...
I like that idea too, I think that's a great idea, to put it in a communication, and it's something simply that she already keeps, a log of, just pop it in.
Right, as soon as they come in here and pay money, there's...
We could look at the right, if you have there, and we just say, there's a plan submitted for the right of property, and...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, so you guys were talking about correspondence, I mean, if you just had like a monthly building department report,
could be, these are the list of, of, you know, site plans that have been submitted for, you know, review, or whatever, whatever else could be coming before planning in the future. It'd just be a monthly report from, from the building department.
Okay, I'm pretty sure we created that document of assistance.
We did, yeah.
So let's not read a measure wheel or anything, just let her issue something that she already does.
Okay.
Yeah, when you draw back there, it's not enough time for you, because an applicant will come to the window, pay the fee, and expect it to be on the agenda.
We're not doing that.
Then, we need to make it very clear that it's not...
Your professionals will need time to review, and then send communication to the clerk or the planning commission and say, we do recommend, we don't recommend. So the applicant is thinking, I got 10 days, no, you don't have 10 days, it's actually, we need those 10 days just to review these, 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 uh...
I don't think that's, that's not what we're saying.
It's in internal, nothing to do with that.
Hold on a second, because I know where he's going, the 10 day thing is the time that Rachel needs to put out the agenda, that is...
That's not 10 days for you to review, that's 10 days for, you've given me the report, when you're 100% done, I have 10 days to put it on the agenda for all of us to review. It's irresponsible for us to fall unprepared to this meeting.
So we usually require 10 businesses prior.
10, somewhere, 21.
Whatever you require, if you get it to me today, it would have gone on next month's agenda.
Right, yeah, so this was, yeah, this wasn't, this not, I'm not rushing you, you take your time. What happened tonight shouldn't have even happened.
So I can get, but my suggestion would be, don't allow them to submit 10 days for it, take it 21 days before. This will give your professionals time to review and meet your 10 day...
It's, that's not what we're saying, the 10 days, he can give it to you today, and you can take two months to review it. I just need it 10 days before our meeting, to put it on the agenda.
To Lucy's point, because that letter was submitted today, and it was with less than the 10 days, it shouldn't have even been brought to the, to planning.
Right.
Yeah, I totally agree, but for that, an applicant to come in and 10 days before the meeting and...
That, that should never be suggested that they have 10 days, I'm not saying that at all, that's not any what I, anything I've said.
I think this would be communicated to the office, that when the applicant is made, that, you know, we should either give them something in writing, or verbally tell them that it's a minimum 21 day...
It is communicated, to them, like, because the fire staff is even longer than that, the fire staff is what, a month, 45 days? Sometimes, yeah, yeah, they, they have, Becky does inform them all that, you know, your planning's gonna take this long, your engineering's gonna take this long, and your fire report, get it in, because your fire report's gonna take one and a half. So, yeah.
Expectations need to be set ahead of time, you're not getting on our agenda.
Yeah, so the 10 day thing is more so, there's no rush to you, review, it's, it's, it's getting like what we got today to her 10 days ago.
Yeah, so I can prepare the agenda and give it to everybody, so everybody has the time to review.
And to what, yeah, back to what you said, so, yes.
Yeah, what we've seen in other communities, it's, it's a schedule, meeting day
Right.
so many weeks before, that's your facility.
Right.
If you miss that, then you're not gonna meet the 10 day report.
Yeah. Correct. Okay, so the other thing, so are we good then, do we want to put that, I guess, somewhere that brought up like, if an applicant sees that they're on the agenda, is that confusing?
But it's not, it's just communications, correspondence, and workshops, and then it's a, a thing behind it.
Just a 30 year report.
Behind the scenes.
It's not on the agenda, it's just a report for the agenda.
Okay. Okay, so then, that's good, I'm gonna go to the next, um, conversation, and just so that we are consistent, because this has come up a couple times too. Do we want to take, um, clients or applicants to the planning stage, to what Sermet was discussing, or the building stage here at this table? Because we have to be consistent, so we can't say, well, you know, we're gonna let you do the planning stage, and then we're gonna let you go with all internal checks, right? Like, in a sense of, you still, we'll just use this item tonight, um, we had the ability to make it contingent, and internally, Sermet and Dave would have checked the boxes for us, right, or we had the ability to bring it back to us and say, okay, we're good with that, you've now checked all of your boxes. Do we want to do that to the, do we want to let people go at a, like I said, we just need to be consistent at a planning stage, or do we want to hold it here all the way to the end to a building stage? And, did you, can you speak on what I'm saying, in case I'm not saying it clearly, Sermet, if you don't mind?
Sure, uh, normal project, three stages, planning, full detailed construction plans, and then actual construction, okay? What we have here is that procedure, three stage, uh, approval to the CVO, the CVO is your last approval. So, planning stage, normally it's site plan, geometry, lines keeping, elevations, what about fires?
All zoning ordinance.
All the zoning ordinance, general story of what the site should look like, and that's what this, this body has been reviewing for years. Once it clears up of, of planning, we're happy with the geometry, fire is happy with the, with the fire escalation, the elevation looks fine, then you clear, it goes to the full construction and building and engineering documents, which means architectural, full architectural, mechanical plumbing, uh, building, structural, and then our part would be the grading, detention, soil erosion, all the permits from other agencies, and we track all that, and walk it through building, plus fire, uh, SADI, and, and any fire, any other agencies, we'll track all that, we have checklists, and once we receive everything, everything checks out, all the design is correct, all other agencies are fine, all the trades have reviewed it, uh, fire side has reviewed it, any other agencies, everybody reviews everything, then we send a communication to building department saying, this is an approvable set plans, you can have a pre-con and issue them their construction permit, subject to their, you know, paying all the escrows and inspection fees. So that's what, that's what you have for now, this, this calls stage two. Stage three, they got their building permit, they go for construction, we provide inspection of your building, and fire and any other agencies, they provide inspection all along, and then they sign off at the end, and then that's what we, when we clear it with Becky, or building department, say, everything is good, all agencies, all inspections are done, you can issue a CVO. Those are the basic three stages. Couple of, of Oakland County municipalities, um, they've combined the first two together. So it would be here at the planning commission, that they will submit all of these details and permits, and you would have to review them every time until they're in a constructible state, so, once it leaves the planning commission, it goes to Becky. This is good for construction, you can go ahead and issue your construction permit. This is good for construction, you can go ahead and issue your construction permit. So they are, there are a few municipalities that have done that. I have not seen, maybe one or two here in the Oakland County, but mostly Oakland County. That gives planning commission full control of all these projects.
I think too, I'd like to add to that is, if we hold projects to a building stage, we also stand a chance of hindering their ability to get money. So we should be okay with letting it go and having the faith in our planning and engineering once we've seen these site plans and stuff, to, you know, let it go a bit. Obviously, we wanna see that these are, these are the expectations, and then they're going to take care of those expectations being met.
And redwood ordinance this afternoon, and what happened when it leaves the planning commission, they consider preliminary site plan, based on the ordinance terminology. They have that plan, and then it goes on the same stages as Sermed's saying. They're gonna must really finalize the site plan stage until all the details are worked out. I mean, a thing to consider, if you want the Sermed say someplace is like to combine, the only thing you gotta watch out for is you don't get yourself in a bind because you're taking on some detail, like a pavement pattern or a utility thing, is no one here, including me, I think Sermed might be the only one in here with a PE after his name, and running risk levels. Because I see people go down the route, no need to. They just start going in, they heard a rumor that there's not enough utility water pressure. And so they don't wanna prevent anything because there's not enough water pressure, it's hearsay. I struggle to, you know, go down, and I don't really wanna get involved with that type of stuff.
Right, I think the reason I bring it up is we just need to pick something and be consistent, because we can't go one way with one.
But haven't we been?
Not always.
Really?
Not necessarily. I think there's some that we held probably a little longer than what we should have.
But they've been our site plans.
Well, that's just it, but did they? Probably not, but should we have let it go maybe a bit sooner for it to be taken care of in that direction? I don't know.
Now, Oakland County plan, does that cause the applicant to get all their stuff done? Hit it quicker, faster? Are they still screwing around all the time? Like, I mean, this guy here, February, he started this process.
Well, to put it in perspective, Redwood just had their pre-con meeting last month.
Right.
And how long ago did you guys approve the site plan for that?
Right.
That's how long the process is.
Yeah, I'm kind of, yeah, because they've just been...
It takes forever to get Eagle permits, all that stuff. So, I mean, it's a long, lengthy process.
Right, which they're not gonna do if they don't have that approval early on.
I think the planning should concentrate on what planning has, which I always thought, have always concentrated on, you know, the preliminary site plans and the professionals, the professionals.
Zoning compliance, that's what this body is looking for.
Yeah, I like to see, I mean, to me, what came here was very still there bone, what we're presented with. Versus, I mean, there, it doesn't seem like they were listening to what you were telling them, to do things and get them on the plan before they even brought it here. That's why it's getting tangled, right? Because we're not getting, I mean, that's not our fault though, that's their fault. So they're limited to points of time, that didn't have nothing to do with us, they're just not...
Well, they originally came without even a site plan. It was like this Google image of, well, you're the...
Right, yeah, estimated thus far, but that's us.
Well, that's still what this, we got, basically. It's not a site plan, it's an over aerial view with some writing on it.
That's a special circumstance. I don't think we should gauge what we do here on that specific project. Redwood is a perfect example. We don't want them coming in here every month for nine months before they get their approval. And you don't need to look at all their testing criteria and their flow data, and the stuff that we engineer is boring, the stuff that we do.
Not at least.
Right? And it has nothing to do with zoning. We argued with them for months, but plastic fudge, you didn't know that. And we've gone through and updated our detail sheets and our standard issues, because Eagle did not agree to that. We spent so much money, so much time to get to the pre-con station, and has nothing to do with zoning. I would have said, I would have thought...
So that's for the most part, I mean, that's generally what we're already doing. There was just, the conversation was... Okay, so we'll just continue what we're doing. Anybody else? Let me see, I think that was it. Planner's report?
During our whole enforcement, I'm kind of with all the officers, getting quite a bit ahead with going. We did do, we haven't gotten far, we do it yet, but on the days I'm here, I'm starting to put together a program to possibly start looking at Gretchen, and we have this commission. Look into what Gretchen is now or wants for in the future, and see different avenues of where to pursue it. It don't want to go that way, Rob. So I'm early on, I'm just trying to put an outline together for Brian, and then assume, you know, what has to be done. I'm trying to do it while I'm here, so we're not incurring additional costs with this plan. But get something like a agreement with the commission, not with the ball.
Public comments on non-adjutant items?
Some quick things.
Sure.
I think we have some public.
My name's Matthew Noye, I've been trying to come to the planning commission and council meetings the past few months since we recently moved to the village. One of the things that I've noticed contrary to the council meetings, is the pledge allegiance is not spoken in these planning commission meetings. I think it'd be a great start to meetings, if we could possibly work that in moving forward. Happy to hear your thoughts, if you got any comment on it.
I'm not opposed to it. Most commission meetings don't, because we're not that official, a subcommittee. But you probably wouldn't see it at like... Yeah, you probably wouldn't see it at a parks and rec meeting, you probably wouldn't see it at a streets committee meeting or anything like that, which is why it's not there. I'm not opposed to it.
You can do it.
Did we do it at one time?
It's an extension of local government. I mean, I get that it's, you know, further down the...
Yeah, we're down here.
I get it, it's a suggestion, it's just something I've noticed. My father's near the village, so we're both kind of on the same page, but...
You're from Tampa, right?
Yes.
I'm just trying to, I'm sure we weren't seeing you last.
That's all I got.
Thank you. And call from the table? And motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at 8:40.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.